This meeting of the October 20th, meeting of the Mount Airy Planning Commission to order, and we'll begin with a pledge to allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get into the master plan feedback from the council, I'm gonna ask, did folks take a look, because we didn't get around to finalizing the August 25th minutes? Lisa and I have worked on these, but I wanted to be sure that some of you had had a chance to review. Anybody see anything that, that you felt needed?
No.
Okay, alright. Then I will move that we accept these minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright. Motion has been made and seconded. If we accept the minutes, all in favor, let them by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like sign. Alright, Lisa?
Yes.
We got it. Okay. Then that's going to take us to this matrix. Everyone have a copy of the matrix with them tonight?
Oh, sure, sure.
Which is...
Thank you.
Can you pack, can I have that?
Yeah.
Well, I brought a little...
Okay.
I had brought this.
Alright, there we go.
You have this.
And this is, is a follow-up. For the most part, it's, it's secondary and as a result of the very productive joint meeting we had a couple of weeks ago with council when we, we stepped through the master plan, land use discussions and recommendations, rezoning recommendations, annexation recommendations, and came to some, some agreement on all of those items. These mirror that in terms of then remaining tweaks, edits if you will, to make the body copy of the master plan consistent. And then in a couple of other cases, some items that, that council has, has noted and took to bring to our attention. So that's where we are really as a result of that, that prior meeting. So, we can step through this in any fashion that, that you'd like. Why don't we just start with the first And this is, this is a combination of corrected history, our historical references, some grammar, some rhetoric, other items. Anybody have an issue with any of the items as they are presented along with staff comments as well on page one? We've got first, an acknowledgement that we clarify it should be C. Oscar Baker rather than Oscar C. Okay? And then in chapter two, I think there's only one reference regarding town history and current regional setting with regard to our, our railroad history, and there's a clarification there. Okay? This, this, all of this was interesting in a way because it, it embellished, I think probably what, what we knew of town history as a result. Okay? Everyone okay with that? And then in chapter four, land use and zoning, reference to the Watkins Building. Watkins Building also damaged by the fire. Okay, so that's just simply, it, it should have been a complete sentence.
No, it's destroyed instead of damaged.
Yeah, destroyed rather than damaged. There we go. There we go. So that's the justification for the fragment. Chapter five, we've got one, two, three, four, five, five pieces. First one is quantity of water for Windy Ridge Park. Fifty-five hundred gallons was mentioned as a potential allocation for Windy Ridge Park. And what staff clarifies is that it's based on the anticipation of future development of the park, which may include the construction and use of facilities such as restrooms, recreation facilities, and pavilions with water service. So it's, it's a potential allocation if it's needed. Second reference in chapter five, listing a previous capacity of former Mount Airy Middle School. Okay, staff comment. Because the recommendation was to actually remove that reference to the former school from the chart, and staff comments, although the middle school's no longer in use, there is a benefit to have a quick glance at the previous condition before the new school was built. The new middle school facility is significant to the town, and if there are no strong objectives, staff is asking that it remain. Okay, you have, you have a preference in this regard? Are you okay with leaving it in?
I'll go with staff recommendations.
Okay, alright. Okay. Tom, is that, if we're talking about something that minor is our feedback, is that a, an issue or a concern for?
No, I, not from any legal standpoint. I mean, if there's something you all wish to comment back to the council before it undertakes its determination on November 3rd.
Okay, but this is minor enough that?
Yeah, I think some of these are fairly minor. Some might even be clerical.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. Absolutely right. Third reference in chapter five, the town of Mount Airy does not provide water and sewer services beyond the municipal limits, and the proposed change from council, the town of Mount Airy does not provide water and sewer beyond the municipal limits unless specifically mandated. This is a useful clarification.
Yes, it's happened.
Unless specifically mandated, which just occurred, by the Maryland Department of the Environment in the case of public health and safety exception. Okay, this is warranted. Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Alright. Next one would be, 2013 Comprehensive Master Plan Update Proposes An Expanded Future Growth Boundary As Compared To The 2003 Master Plan. And the proposed change, the 2013 Comprehensive Master Plan Update Includes Changes To The Outer Growth Boundary And The Future Land Use Designations As Compared To The 2003 Master Plan. Minor change, but appropriate. Okay, are you okay with that as well? Alright. And then the last reference to chapter five concerns the ultimate town boundary as defined in the 1994 and 2003 master plans. It'll be modified during this master plan cycle. Okay, so what we have proposed instead is specific to the changes in the agreements that resulted from our joint session. So let me take you, give you a moment to look back over that. So it's specifically referencing the details of changes in the outer growth boundary as, as currently agreed. Three separate parcels, Dobbs, Springwood, and Spicer. And it speaks to the water service area map categorizing all potential annexation and future planned service areas. The new outer growth boundary reflects a total of three retractions from the adopted growth boundary. References parcel F in the 2003 master plan, it'll no longer be included in the 2013 ultimate growth boundary. The Warfield property, abutting a portion of the Neill property will also be removed. And located in Frederick County, the Zeltman property containing 153 acres of agricultural land will be removed. Okay? These were essentially the, the agreements that we had as a result of our joint session. Okay? Are you in, you in agreement with these changes?
Yeah, did we, did we miss, 84 lumber came out too.
It's true, it did.
Eighty-four lumber property came out. I don't see that reflected.
That's not reflected here.
I think that...
That's not F.
It may be by deletion, however, if you look in the original planning recommendations, it says the outer growth limit will be expanded south to include the 84 lumber site. I believe that that has been deleted in the proposal.
Oh, the language.
Oh, it has been. Yes, that's true. It has been. Yeah.
So the modified language doesn't specifically call out the fact that 84 is removed. It's just?
It's just simply not there.
Just not there.
Right.
Okay, alright, good. Good clarification.
I don't think, the reference to parcel F. I don't know, I don't know about that. It's not on, it's with the map with the annexation now. Oh, there it is. Here it is. Oh, yeah, F and G. Okay.
Got it.
Yeah, that's really small to be, to be.
Right.
Yeah, there.
Okay, we're, we had approved it, and that was not...
Yeah, I was just saying that F was coming out.
Because, I'm sorry, is it, is it again?
No, that's a different F.
Okay.
That's a different F.
That would make sense.
The 2003 master plan parcel F was 120 acres bordering the South Branch with the Petapscope. Yeah, that's a different F. I was gonna say, yeah, there were any changes to that.
So they're just saying, we never had this F.
No.
Okay, that, that.
No, we did not. That's why, that's why they're clarifying that. And they reference parcel F per the 2003 master plan. Alright, so I believe this is consistent with, with the joint meeting. Okay? So we're okay with this?
Yeah.
With this recommendation? Alright. Then we'll move to chapter six, the transportation chapter. Proposed road connections in the original copy referenced Scotch Heather Candice possible connection. And the decision was to remove that connection, and so appropriately that wording comes out. Okay? Alright. And then we go to seven. Seven's the Community Facilities and Public Services Chapter. Previously, we talked about betrayal connection, rails for trails as a future possibility, and of course, it's now a reality. And so future should come out. That modifier's no longer needed?
Yeah.
Okay, that works. On page 132 in chapter seven, Mount Airy Sports Complex, quote, "This fact coupled with the realization that the fire company would prefer to develop their land at the fireman's activity facility at some point in the future, so forth and so forth." The recommendation is to simply remove the statement.
No, he's gonna say, did they have an opinion?
No. Well, they've, but I think the point is, they've stated emphatically they have no plans currently to develop the property. They're just asking that the master plan reflect exactly what they have said.
That's fine.
So from that standpoint, it wouldn't be appropriate to even speculate about that as a location?
Yeah, we've had more than enough speculation.
Yeah, let's check that out.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's appropriate. Alright, so that, that recommendation works. Then page 133, same chapter. Originally citations that indicate the middle school age students within the town attend New Market Middle. Really, I didn't pick up on that, obviously. And per the attendance maps, that statement is no longer true. Perhaps at one time it was, but no longer. So that citation would be taken out. And staff makes the comment, that is a dated citation, and we just simply missed it. We were reviewing previous versions. So they're in agreement that that, that would come out. Alright. Also, chapter seven, on page 138, a reference to the Flatiron Building, the caption, "Rebuilt in 1903, the Flatiron Building Was Purchased By The Town Of Mount Airy In October Of 1951." When in reality, we learned, the rebuild occurred in 1917.
Yeah, because it was built in 1903.
Okay. Built in 1903, rebuilt in 1917.
Is it a fire?
Yeah, I thought it was a fire. It's like 1917.
Okay. Alright, so I think we're, that's certainly acceptable because it's correct. Page 142 in that same chapter, "The town of Mount Airy has historically utilized groundwater wells, and the town has been fortunate to find, purchase, and drill several large production wells, all within our municipal borders." And recommendation by council, yeah, "Has historically utilized groundwater wells, the town has been fortunate to find, purchase, and drill several large production wells, the majority within our municipal borders." And staff adds, "Only two of our 11 wells are outside." So, so that, that comment, "The majority are within," is absolutely accurate. Okay? So that works. And lastly, in chapter seven, on 143, "All paper, glass, plastic, cardboard continue to be collected once weekly throughout the entire town. The expansion there is to clarify the difference between Frederick and Carroll Counties. All paper, glass, plastic, and cardboard continue to be collected once weekly for town residents located in Carroll County, and on a bi-weekly basis for town residents located in Frederick County." Okay? So that works. Alright. That takes us to chapter four, land use and zoning chapter. Okay, on page 70, and what we're doing here is, we're clarifying agreement from that joint session. So with regard to the Holmes property, recommended zoning at the time was limited commercial. Agreement from the joint session was that it be neighborhood professional. Hadad property was proposed to be limited commercial. The recommendation is that it changed to neighborhood professional. And chiropractic first, the proposal was limited commercial, and the resulting recommendation is neighborhood professional. Okay?
Have you heard from anybody about how they thought about that?
Well, I see at least one individual at this year.
Two.
I don't think, I'm not sure really. I mean, it was council's recommendation.
It is.
Do you have your hearing? Have you had your public hearing?
No.
No, the, the, not yet.
Yeah, so that would be the time that...
I thought it was public hearing.
Yeah. This is just, yeah, this is, what we're doing here is teeing up.
For the public hearing. Okay.
Pending final draft for that hearing.
Right, but if, I would suggest to the chair that if folks still want to comment on these particular changes, I, you know, by all means, we'll let folks do that. Although, I would also say I would caution any changes at this point because the council and the planning commission have reached a very solid joint consensus on the details.
That would be my thought.
But at least for the record, I think it's appropriate to allow anyone who wants to, to speak to these to do so for a few minutes, two, three minutes worth. Anyone wish to make a comment regarding either the Holmes property, the Hadad property, or chiropractic first? Yes, sir. If you'd come up to the podium and introduce yourself and...
Thank you and good evening. My name is Hannah Hadad, and I own, first of all, I just want to say I'm thankful that you changed two of my lots to be neighborhood professional. And the lot I want to talk about is the one on Ridge, Ridge Court with Dr. Williams and Mr. Holmes. As of three weeks ago, the recommendation was limited commercial, and all of a sudden it was changed to neighborhood professional.
Right, I'm sorry, Mr. Hadad, which one, 1401 or 1403?
1403.
1403, thank you.
Now, I understand the concern of the neighbors about traffic and all that stuff, and all I want to say is the limited commercial, I mean, I wish some of the neighbors were here tonight because they were concerned that there's going to be a gas station, or there's going to be a 7-Eleven, or it's going to be something, you know. And I just want to assure the neighbors and assure you that if it was changed back to limited commercial, or it's going to be like a mom-and-pop store with, with a very limited hours. And, and the traffic, I mean, it's not going to affect any of the traffic because the traffic is going to be going straight down. It's not going to be going down on Ridge Road, Ridgeville Road, I believe. There's three big businesses all the way down, which is the, what is it? The tow truck company, and there's a plumbing company, and there's a, and that's, that's what's causing all the traffic. And I think the solution, the solution for all that traffic is just a three-way stop sign, and I'll be more than happy to even fund that, to put the three-way stop sign at the entrance where it goes down to the Ridge Court and the Ridgeville.
Okay.
That's all I want to say, and I thank you.
Thank you, sir.
How's that?
1403.
1403.
My name's Andrew Williamson with Chiropractic First. Just briefly, you know, I, I can appreciate both sides of things. Obviously, I thought the limited commercial worked better for my location. Could I live with neighborhood professional? Yes, but I thought limited commercial worked better for my situation. I can appreciate where some of the neighbors were thinking that there's going to be a big shopping center there. Limited commercials, it does limit it a fair amount. The, the end reality of it is that, you know, I'm going to be operating that business there until I'm old and gray. So it doesn't, it doesn't make a huge difference to me as far as that's concerned, but I did think that the limited commercial was a better idea, and I think it better suited that, that space. But I do appreciate, you know, I know, I know what you guys have put into this. It's been a long time, and I'm sure you guys are looking forward to come to an end, and I appreciate that a lot. So, great.
Very good.
Thank you.
Was there anyone here who wanted to speak to the Holmes property?
He's out of town.
No, okay. Alright. Okay, then, are we, are we good to go to, at least for the time being, to check off the council's recommendations?
Yeah, we want to check them there.
No, no. But we, we did want to give these individuals a chance to speak on record. Okay, that takes us, here you go, chapter five. This, okay. And the Warfield property, sort of in page 89 in our books. And the recommendation there, because we ultimately decided not to include the Warfield property in the outer growth boundary, was to remove the description for the property and to make appropriate adjustments on the charts. Very straightforward. Okay? Alright. Then on page 91, in the Frederick County annexation areas, the Zeltman property, and then here we reference also 84 lumber. And because of the joint decisions, these two descriptions should be removed.
Right.
And to also then adjust the lettering on, on the charts. Okay? The next reference, page 87, was interesting. Actually, the, the B and C references on the maps were switched.
No.
Harrison should be C. Rather than B. Lyshear should be B. Rather than C.
Okay.
Okay? Alright. Some of you actually look at the maps and confirm that? Okay, good. Alright, and then page 89, what we do here is simply then clarify in the discussion that when we're talking about B, we're talking about Lyshear, and that discussion's appropriate to Lyshear. And when we're talking about reference to C, property C, that's Harrison, and that discussion's appropriate to it.
Right.
So that's the follow-through on those two. Okay?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Alright, everyone in agreement on that? See ya. Okay. And that takes us to page 89. Originally, let's see, this is the Myers property. This is D. And the plan did not include this parcel of land because it, it more recently had been purchased by Carroll County IDA. Since that's occurred, council is saying we need to reference that property in the final master plan draft. Located on the northeast corner of Watersville Road in Maryland 27, it contains .46 acres of land. Carroll County recently purchased this property for potential use at such time as the Harrison property develops. The town has identified the land use designation of this property as office park employment. Okay? So consistent with the proposed land use for the adjacent property.
Except for that single-family home is right there on the corner.
Yes.
Yeah, right there. That just...
Right, right.
Mm-hmm. Adjacent to 27 and Watersville, yes.
I think, is it still currently occupied?
So rental property.
Yeah, I think it is.
Okay, so, but the county owns it. They're renting.
IDA owned it.
Okay. And then also, chapter five, on page 89, is the final chart edits for Lyshear, Harrison, and Myers, B, C, and D, so that they are appropriately labeled. So that follows through on that. Okay? And lastly, council, on average, this was your recommendation and clarification that any references to the newly adopted water allocation ordinance be referenced?
Yeah, I think...
Where, when water capacity's discussed.
Right, yeah, staff, I think Heather understood the, the comment. Throughout here, we talk about water, water allocation, but we don't talk about it in terms of referencing our new water allocation ordinance, which means we now prioritize how water is allocated, not first come, first served. And that's kind of a very important critical planning tool, so.
That is, since it's, since that's now in place, yeah. That, that came about after we had started drafting.
Yes.
Okay, good.
And then there are actually two things I'd like to add. They're not substantive, so it won't cause, shouldn't cause planning of the council any problems. The first thing, I think I'd asked this before, Melissa, that the document itself needs to have a version and a change page.
Okay.
So, I mean, this was the first draft, so it should say draft version one. And then the next, that, you know, when we're done tonight, it goes to the council, whatever terminology you use, and the changes apply. I mean, it's important for document tracking so folks can see where we were and where we went. And then the second thing I'd like added in, and again, this is not substantive, but chapter four, land use planning, on page... Get to chapter four because I can't find the headers.
Chapter four, you said?
On page 53, oops. On page 53 in the first paragraph, we talk about, and I'll just, I'll reference a sentence. "As a result, the 2013 town master plan will alter the existing development direction in order to promote land use patterns that reflect the community's vision as revealed in the 2008 town survey and affirmed in 2012." If we're laying out where we're going based on those two documents, those surveys should be included as an addendum to this master plan. And we don't do that. Yeah, we don't do that. I mean, if you're gonna claim that that's authoritative, you've got, you've got to reference it in the documents.
Right. You're right.
And again, these aren't substantive changes. I think they just help clarify the plan.
Tom, would you be in agreement that that, while not substantive, is, would be appropriate?
Sure.
Okay. Good. Good. Anything else?
There's also matrix changes to the maps, too. Who got that?
We did not get that.
No, we did not get that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, they, basically, they're changes to the maps that correspond with all of these things.
Okay.
For instance, they call out that the Harrison-Lyshear will be re-designated.
B for C.
Oh, okay.
Stuff like that.
Myers is D.
So, Tom, if you declare this as authoritative.
Right.
Then that simply supports it.
This is, yes, exactly.
That follows.
We're just making the maps follow what we just said.
Yeah, I mean, you're probably better to have a look at this.
Okay.
I want to say yes for almost all of it. There is one that may not fall into that. For instance, there it is. Just looking at it. For instance, if Council fourteen eighty-seven, which is a part of the Harrison farm, which is already in town, the land use designation in the initial draft was open space, the proposed change would be to assign it a land use designation of the new OPE, since it would be a part of the Harrison-Lyshear property. That's not necessarily contained in here.
Should we, again, if we, if we add it to this document and declare it as authoritative, is that, because we shouldn't have to, if we add to this document, declare this is authoritative and that's supporting, does that?
Yeah, I mean, in other words, that's the one instance that I knew to look for that is not in here. I just don't want to guarantee there's not something else along those same lines that's in there that you all have seen. I think I'd prefer that the copies at least be distributed to you and take a look at.
Let's go ahead and look at it all together tonight. So if indeed it is felt it's simply a complement, extension of this matrix, then we can so designate it, make sure it's included. Hmm?
Rev B.
Rev B.
My recommendation would be just to have a formal vote on the record of the plan and commission to accept these changes.
Okay.
So that therefore we'll have a vote of the plan, an official vote with minutes, in the minutes, of the planning commission accepting the changes, supposing they're acceptable, and then ultimately, if the town council acts, presumably, in accordance with the joint meeting, then you'll have that on the record as well, and you'll have a consensus between both bodies.
All right, and the two suggestions I've just made, though, they don't, I don't think they need, that's just clarification, they don't need to be included there, because they don't have any weight to how the master plan is implemented.
Agreed. Okay. Not too concerned. So while we're waiting for those copies to come, next steps from here, assuming that there is an agreement, in two weeks prior to the, prior to the November third council meeting, would be a public hearing opportunity for our position, let's say.
At the council meeting?
Prior to it.
Just prior to.
When is that? Oh, like that same day?
Their regular.
On November third.
On November third, prior to their regular meeting.
So.
Their November meeting.
Here?
Mhm.
Seven, or what time?
I believe it was scheduled for seven.
I think it would be seven, because normally, your council meetings start at seven thirty?
That's correct.
Yes.
So I think it's at seven o'clock here.
Okay.
To take, the council, we'll take public comments on the proposed changes. And then at its regular meeting that evening, we'll vote on the master plan.
And so, Melissa, these changes, these recommendations, and assuming that we have agreement tonight from planning commission, they will be reflected on the website?
Yes.
The links to the website so the public can see that between now and November third?
They're actually up on the website right now, this draft.
Okay.
But.
Good.
I can add to it, saying that it's been approved, assuming in it.
All right, here we go.
Right, it sounds like we just have one pending change, and that's parcel fourteen eighty-seven. Tom just mentioned.
I think that's the only one.
The question is, do we have a map to reference this by?
Yes, it's, should correspond with the maps in your, in the draft. Got it, just will pull out the.
It's kind of hard to see which map.
So, this first one, the zoning map, what?
Yeah, I don't know which we're referencing. Just on page reference. I mean, zoning is Chapter Four of the plan, so page sixty-seven, page sixty-seven and page sixty-eight are, since, the maps on land use and zoning. There are no maps on that page.
Okay.
Question, clarification?
Yes.
In your changes, I don't have the two thousand three plan here, but it's just coincidental. You talk about removing parcel F from the two thousand three plan of one hundred and twenty acres. Ironically, that's the same acreage as the Downs, but in the paragraph above, you say you're adding it in. So it seems to be a little bit of a conflict, and I'm not sure. I don't have the benefit of the map, so.
The only thing they're doing is they're clarifying that that reference in the two thousand three plan is not appropriate. We, we'll have an F in the two thousand thirteen. It's not the same one. So we're making sure that there's a distinction there.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
I mean, yeah, Downs is in there.
Right, it says in the top paragraph.
Yeah.
It's taking it out. It appears it's taking it out, but you're saying it's just changing the F.
It's changing the reference, it was referred to as F in two thousand three.
Yeah.
Michael Berman, I just have a clarification on the, and I guess there's a comprehensive zoning plan which shows all the zoning as it is delineated in the master plan. Understanding is that eventually, there would be another document that is the actual zoning map.
Yes.
When that is prepared, is there any opportunity on a public forum or to make sure that there's no mistakes on that?
Yes, there'll be, because it's going to be a change to Chapter one twelve, zoning chapter, by ordinance there and statute, there must be a hearing, and there will be.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's sometime Jan, I think we're plans to vote on that January. Yeah. So December, I think December, correct me if I'm wrong, December it'll be introduced, so certainly comment that. And then January it will be voted on, certainly you can comment then as well.
Yeah, there'll be an official public hearing probably before that council meeting in January.
Thanks, Michael, for asking that, so that could be clarified. Worthwhile. Okay, so when we reference the zoning map.
Which, which page is?
Designated link.
It's right before page sixty-seven.
Right, okay. Before sixty-seven.
Yeah, the map right before, here's page sixty-seven.
Okay, come.
Yep.
All right.
And they have one.
And so, the recommended change is the map should notate, the zoning map reflects existing zoning at the time the plan is adopted. And that, we just got through saying this. An updated zoning map will be created after the rezoning process is complete.
Right.
Will refer to the ordinance approved to amend the zoning map, thereby changing the zoning of the properties.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So the one on page sixty-eight is.
There is no one on page sixty-eight.
Existing zoning at the time that it's being adopted. It's not final, final. So that can likely transpire in January, is the plan. Okay. Parks and Rec map. So this is in reference to the rails to trails.
So this is just missing, correcting the change?
Yeah. The map should reflect the intended trail to the east.
So that's probably page one thirty-two.
To Watersville.
It's a map after one thirty-one.
Nope.
On page one thirty-two?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, it would be updating, updating the trail delineation. Purpose of this master plan cycle, the trail update to the east is appropriate, but it's unknown at this time as to the likelihood of extending the trail west. That would likely occur beyond the horizon of this plan. Okay?
So they're just going to show what parts have already been completed?
Right.
Because that was also part of the rationale for some of the annexation.
For, for the change, right.
Okay. All right. So that's going to be the one on one thirty-two.
Right.
The community framework map, that's also recommended that trails be incorporated on the community framework map.
Where might that be?
What is that?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, I guess we didn't do it, the staff thought it would be the overlay.
Patty knows what, all of these maps, she'll be able to tell us.
Absolutely.
I'll tell Peter, he's a lawyer, he's got to make his notes as to what page.
Yeah. Next time, we're going to have to ask him, it's adjacent to what page?
Community framework. I don't know who that is.
Does it say community framework on the map itself?
Yeah, it seems like he's just picking, pulling the name right off, but I don't see community, he would think that would.
But you're looking at changing it anyway, they not even have that map in doing overlay.
The trails are not currently delineated on this community framework map.
Right.
And the comment, the recommended change is that they should be.
Or just add an overlay.
Seems logical.
Yeah, sure.
We just don't know which map it is.
Since we can't find the map.
We just don't know which one it is.
We'll give them the shut, we'll give them the benefit of the doubt.
Just because we've worked on this plan for years doesn't mean we know where everything is.
That, existing facility is page one fifty.
Okay.
One fifty?
Yeah, one five zero.
All right.
Yeah, it's one fifty. One.
Well, then, I'm going to suggest we go along with the community framework recommendation because it's a logical edit. Existing facilities, one fifty. Facility Y for Warren Methodist Church no longer exists, so it should be removed.
Oh, that's right, because that's now the, that's now the, thanks, the Masons, thank you. Yes, the Masons.
All right. So hence the recommendation removal from the map?
Back to the community framework one.
Then regionalism policies. This is one of Scott's recommendations. Incorporated area delineation gets lost. More significant contrast to identify the incorporated area. Okay.
Community facilities.
Which is the regionalism map he's referring to?
School, one, two, seven.
Where is that section?
We might need a index of maps.
That's a good idea.
That would be a good idea.
Yep.
I'm going to go on my computer and pull up if I can.
Okay.
Because we just simply can't find them. It's not in municipal growth element, it's not in land use.
I found community framework.
Okay. Where'd you get it?
What page is that?
My page to after page thirty-two.
Okay.
Oh, that makes perfect sense.
Right. There you go.
Okay, I got it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so.
I haven't found the regionalization.
Let's come, we'll come back to regionalism policies. So, on that same map then, community destination points for the north end and south end gateways of Main Street and Senior Center are questioned. Linear park delineation along the south branch Patapsco River is shaped as an arrow. The change is needed. Minor adjustments of these destination areas will address any confusion. Bring adjustment of community destination points on the gateways of Main Street inward to delineate the historic center of town. Adjust the senior center and library point, and determine if the arrow is appropriate.
This here?
GIS delineation for linear parks. Okay.
That's the arrow, but I'm not sure I understand.
There's the arrow.
It's the senior center and library point. This way.
Okay.
It's back gager, so it's.
So the recommendation here is to conform the green area, the overlay?
Yeah, I always.
To these north and south end gateways of Main Street and the senior center.
I would just refer to staff.
I mean, they'll be able to make that.
Correct.
Appropriate is appropriate.
None of this is substantive.
Right.
Right? Just refer to staff.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think you're saying, change number six, refer to staff?
Mhm.
Because we're going to get wrapped around the, we're going to start dotting D's and crossing I's and crossing T's and dotting I's at the moment.
We're not nearly as familiar as staff is.
Yeah.
And can I suggest on number five, whatever, regionalism policies, just refer to staff?
Good idea. Staff handles number five and number six?
Yeah.
Okay. That's the most efficient approach, too. Okay? And then that takes us to change seven, existing use of land. This has got to be in the land use chapter. Which is going to be four, I would think.
Yeah.
Four.
It's page sixty-seven.
Page sixty-seven?
Yeah, sixty-seven, there's a bunch of them here.
Notation that non-residential special exceptions are considered commercial land use. The change is needed, remove this comment. Restore residential use on the corners of Ridge Court and East Ridgeville Boulevard, parcels oh four nine four and oh four nine nine. Okay, uh-huh. Yeah. Non-residential special exception would no longer be appropriate. So that comes out. Okay, and so on the map on page sixty-seven, the comment is that restore residential use on the corners of Ridge Court.
That's, Ridge Court isn't that going to be somewhere over here?
Remark, when a non-resident professional office special exception is granted, there's no longer requirement the property maintain any residency.
Right, so there, the remark just, there's no change needed here.
That's, yeah. Staff can confirm that, but that's appropriate as far as I understand. Okay, let's refer to staff to confirm that as well.
When that gets rid of that one little block, remember we kept talking about that one little block, the red block that was not, should have been considered residential? Do you remember what I'm talking about? There was this one little block that was locked down on Main Street.
Yeah, it was locked in between industrial and.
Right.
Mhm.
Was that?
That's on the cornmeal ground, wasn't it?
Now, well.
It was adjoining.
Joining cornmeal grounds, but.
The cornmeal grounds, correct.
Okay, so that takes me back to, was that change reflected in here? I remember that coming up, and I remember discussing it.
Yeah, we gave Heather the right to.
Determine what to do.
To offer to.
Oh, that's right.
Correct.
Right, we didn't go back with them. I'm not sure what she had in mind.
Well, I mean, we, we should ask staff to also look into that and handle it as appropriate because.
There's, um, there's a, a small piece of resident, it's residential, right?
It's residential that is right.
It's sandwiched, it's basically surrounded by the industrial part, which is the paying property of leave, and now the carnival grounds, assuming there's no change to the carnival grounds going.
The landscaper guy.
Community commercial.
So it's in between the two?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we were gonna go back and ask how he wanted it to be zoned, so that it to be consistent with whatever the carnival grounds are.
It could be industrial or commercial.
Right, because either way, cuz it's right in the middle.
Right, so this, that's.
What's the name of the, um, it's, the guy's name is, he's a landscaper guy, um.
Buckman.
Buckman, thank you.
Tom Buckman.
Okay.
Buckman Property, right.
So, right, so that's not covered in here, that was missed.
No, it's not, no, and that was something, um, we were gonna go back and ask them what they want to do.
I, I remember the discussion, the, the DA, it's a great thing you brought it up. Tom's got that look on his face like.
But I don't know if, what, what kind of feedback she got over.
Right.
But no decision, I guess the point is, the point is a decision has to be made and none so far exists. I think there was, I, I, I think there was an underlying theme of consensus that said, yeah, here's an issue.
It's just it's odd.
Here's an, it's odd, something should be done about it, but.
Alright, so, so we're waiting to get clarification from staff?
Steph was gonna go back and talk to Buckman and find out what they wanted to do with that.
Okay. If, if we could, if we could get that accomplished, and that in turn even via email or whatever way it was communicated out to us.
Can't do it on email, it's gotta be done.
It's gotta be done with a quorum?
Yeah, it would have to be done with a quorum as a.
I mean, is the consensus of this body to make the change if the owner consents to it?
Yeah, I thought that's.
Yeah, we said.
So then let's, then let's make it conditional.
Whatever the owner wanted, we were fine with it, so that it didn't have to come back to us.
Well, with some limitations, I mean, if the owner wanted, um.
No, 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 the only options were either save what it was or go to commercial.
Or industrial.
Industrial.
Yep.
So he couldn't go agricultural. Yeah, there were three options actually.
So it sounds like we're suggesting a second change to this document. Right, the first change is, just Tom, you already gave us that fourteen eighty four, and the second change would be this, if it is truly the Buckman property, the change, the second change would be that allow it to go either remain as is or industrial or commercial, depending on what the property owner wanted. And, I mean, I think, I mean, I can't speak for the council, but I think, sure, that makes perfect sense. Bob, what's your thought on?
I, I thought that we all had agreed sitting here at the table that Heather was gonna talk to the, to the property owner, and the three options were keep it as is, industrial or commercial, and which way you wanted to go.
And we didn't care which way.
Right, so for, but I guess what I'm driving towards is, I think that the output.
But this document doesn't reflect that.
Right, but the, and the output tonight, as I understand from Tom, should be that the planning commission passed this tonight, so now the planning commission is done, 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 done. So.
Can you put it in there conditionally?
Yeah, that's my suggestion.
That's what I was wondering. It sounds like the only.
Is it all conditional, walk upon how much approval then, you know?
Okay.
That is something that we'll have to have, line of evidence, sir.
Yes, well, and, but this body has to pass this tonight.
Yes.
So, okay, so it sounds like we're.
So let's make that a conditional. And, members, are we seeing which of, whichever of those three is the preference of the landowner?
That's fine.
Okay, alright, can I have a motion of that effect?
Or you wanna just, we'll.
We'll make that part of the, the last one, okay, alright.
And we'll get the language from, both the changes from Tom before we make it.
Okay.
And I apologize, and I was just checking.
No, 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 that's good.
From the council perspective, I was just, I'm fine with it, Councilman King's fine with it.
That's fine.
I think that was the consensus at the meeting.
Yeah, great, fabulous.
It, it needs to be done, well, that's, yeah, that's, we arrive at better understandings that way. Alright, change number eight. Existing use of land also. Existing comment, property locations at the southwest corners of Waterville and Maryland twenty seven, Park Avenue, Maryland twenty seven are delineated with commercial land use. Additionally, parcel one eighty four, Twin Arch Road is delineated with commercial. And the change is needed, existing use of land map, is this the same one, is this also sixty seven?
Yeah, excuse me, yes.
Should be changed to reflect residential rather than commercial. And the remarks, these properties were delineated in the two thousand and three existing use of land map as commercial. This is likely as a result of the degree of non-residential use operating on the property. In some cases, these properties are longstanding special exceptions. In other cases, there's a history of a non-conforming use that allows commercial. The town council should determine the appropriate classification of these properties.
What are we, I, I, I'll be blunt, I don't understand what the.
They're residential, they're residential.
I think what he's saying is they're, they're being delineated inappropriate. They're being delineated as their use, not as their, as their.
Right, and so they wanna go back and put it as their zoning.
Make it accurate.
Right, instead of what they're using it for.
Which is probably.
Which makes sense.
That's pretty good.
Yep.
So where is, they previously were delineated as commercial? That should be changed to, to be residential? Okay, can you actually see them on the, on the map?
Define C.
Yeah.
Not really.
I don't have to say that.
The southwest corners of Waterville and twenty seven.
Well, isn't that the Hoffmann property?
Yep.
Northwest with the Dr. Burkett.
Here's Waterville.
So there, there, there's.
Is that the Hoffmann property?
Yes.
Of this one, it's white.
Next to the park and across from Dr. Burkett?
Commercial, yeah, it's this one here, so you're talking about this one here.
That's the Hoffmann property.
Right, right here. It's shown as right here, so here's Waterville twenty seven, so I think that's Hoff, Hoffmann, and then north of it is, um, Dr. Burkett.
Oh, yeah.
And Park Avenue at twenty seven, is that?
Park Avenue twenty seven is.
Is that Dr. O'Brien's property?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I agree with the change, right, the point of the change is, it's not commercial, it's.
Reflects actual zoning as of today.
Yep, I think that's what you're saying.
Okay, okay, well, that's accurate, that's accurate.
Okay.
Alright, that's also sixty seven, okay. Alright, and Scott's third one is same map, parcel one thousand one hundred ten, lot one Conestoga Heights reflects existing land use of industrial.
So that's down.
Instead of industrial, it should be residential.
It's this one here.
Okay, alright, so.
No, Conestoga would be here.
It's not only this one.
Right here.
Yeah, right here.
And that's just an error, so we just.
Yeah, I got, um.
It's actually right there.
Little print slice, yeah.
It's right here. No, yeah.
It's a, looks like a bleeder.
Yeah. So that should also be residential.
So, oh, yeah, so it is.
Yep.
Yep.
Not industrial, it's residential, okay?
Yep.
Alright, so we're in agreement with that? Alright, so that gets changed. Liz, are you taking absolutely perfect notes on all this? Alright, good.
When you make the motion, we should just review the. Didn't Nixon say, no.
Oh, okay.
Hita Wells.
Number eleven. No, I, no, back, excuse me, number ten. Several open space areas did not transfer onto the designated comprehensive land use map, open space areas.
Where's that map?
Okay.
Designated, comp, yeah, next.
So that's the next page, is that one?
Yeah. So, before page sixty seven.
Six, okay, before sixty seven.
Some of this did not transfer onto some of this.
Delineate open space in public use areas that are one existing use of land on designated comprehensive land use where appropriate.
Several open spaces.
Okay, what's gonna be the reference for that? What's gonna be the?
I think they're looking at the previous map, I thought could be wrong.
We, we need a standard then for open space in public use areas.
There are a couple areas that are not, that have missed it, so like, if you look at the purple coming up here, there's a tip that's green, and it's not green on this.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so there's those kinda things, I think they're just talking about making sure this matches this.
Okay, so.
Refer to staff.
So the comment is justified, and again, staff would know.
Right.
Yeah, refer to staff.
So we refer to staff on this?
Yep.
Okay, alright. Uh, comment eleven, carnival grounds are delineated with designated comprehensive land use of commercial, um, should not be designated as commercial.
True.
So will need to be changed if there is not a majority vote to support the parcel to be rezoned to commercial, okay?
So I think that one gets eliminated because.
After you vote, I mean.
After you vote.
Yeah.
Make sure the, the maps, the in-app match, whatever.
Right, so the comment here is refer to, refer to staff.
Yep, same thing.
Yeah.
You know, I'm looking at this little green tip of a, of a spot, like you were calling that, you know what that is?
No.
Stormwater Management Pond.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Right down, look at that, you got purple, and you got another big green area over there, right in the middle of.
Yeah.
Stormwater Management Pond. So off that. Where is designated as open space and public use?
No, he's got Summit Ridge, which would be somewhere over here. That's the stormwater management pond behind, in between, over by the power lines. It's over by where the power line, power lines are, it's between Summit Ridge and Sterling Creek.
So it should still be marked as.
No, 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 not Summit, that's here into Twin Ridge, okay, Twin Ridge Village.
Should we still have to look at this place?
Still, and public use, so it's still the same.
The stormwater management pond.
That's where the most bar used to be.
Well, across the street.
Alright, but the.
Oh, yeah, you're right, there's that, there's that land there, so I bet that's what these are.
Right, so would, but we'll still just refer this to staff for correction?
Right, cuz it's still public use.
I finally saw the stormwater management pond in Wildwood today. You finally saw it? No.
The beavers. I heard, I thought, I heard there was an alligator up for the summer, but, or is that a croc?
Okay, number twelve.
He's good fried anywhere.
Now we shift to the future annexation area map. What page is that on?
It's the very next map.
That's the next map?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
No.
No, it's, um, it's kinda, I have it bad. That is ninety one.
Ninety one, yep.
Page ninety one?
That is for us.
Okay, so here, there's some cleanup in order. Zeltman, eighty four lumber in Warfield.
Yep, that just makes sense.
Come out, alright, staff handles that too. Uh, change thirteen.
That's Tom's first change.
Mm-hmm.
No, this is the Myers property. Being added to the outer growth boundary.
Yep.
Which prior, it was not.
Myers gets added, um.
Cuz it's part of the Harrison-Leger.
Correct.
Right, okay.
They purchased that corn lot, I believe, that the.
Right.
It's desirable because.
Right, that's, sorry, that's this comment here. So the answer is.
The comment also, the change is if the Warfield property is removed from the future annexation area, okay, then the Myers property would, would be labeled D. Okay.
I, I would just, I would just, I would, I would strike that, let staff worry about what they call it, right? The last sentence, strike, and just say, yes, addition of Myers property located on, right?
However they wanna put it.
Well, or something to the effect, uh, Myers property, you know, added and referenced appropriately or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
And this is that B.C., we just have it labeled map.
Yeah.
So it's fine.
So with approval, I mean, that'll, that'll fall into place. Uh, comment fourteen, also future annexation area is, um, proper reference to Harrison and LaSheer.
In the map.
In the map, yeah.
Not the legend.
In the map, correct, the map itself, so correctly identified on map. Change fifteen, um, parcel fourteen eighty seven, part of Harrison Farm, uh, land use designation existing is open space, the change is needed, should be changed to OPE on the map.
This is the one I was referencing.
Okay, Wayne, what page is that?
It'd be back to the designated comprehensive use, just before page sixty seven.
Sixty seven.
While a parcel is delineated by number, I'm quite certain it's the triangular, um, parcel that is within corporate boundary.
Yeah, that, that would be a.
This one here.
That would be a.
So that would, she, she would have to add a, an OPE designation to this map, I think.
Okay.
Where, which one, I'm sorry, which one?
I think it's.
Designated comprehensive land use, that's this.
Okay.
The triangular, um.
Got it, okay.
Parcel there.
Yep, yep, okay. Alright.
Make that OPE instead?
Yes.
That particular parcel, so staff needs to handle that, is the extension of Harrison. And lastly, uh, the Cowboy property, parcel one thousand one hundred twelve, that land use designation on the map should reflect general commercial.
Down there?
Sixty seven, and where is that?
Cowboys, um, Detroit's down here.
It's gonna be down here, that's the blue.
Blue.
That's where the blue was, yeah.
The blue?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's actually this one, cuz, um, Dr. Andrews and Mr. Dodd, this Mr. Dodd, that's Dr. Price.
Right, right, so it's, it's the bottom one, it's the bottom blue square.
Yep.
Okay, that should be red.
Yep.
Okay. Staff handles that, alright.
Hey, Tom, go back to the one we just covered, fifteen, that parcel fourteen eighty seven?
Yep.
Okay, so, we're talking this map here, right?
Yes.
Okay, if we're calling out this, that green area, OPE, nothing else in here is called out, OPE, I mean, Harrison-Leger's not listed here as OPE, nothing's called out.
That's because Harrison-Leger's outside the corporate boundary.
Oh, this is what's in town right now.
So this is what's currently within town.
Okay.
And the only parcel.
I'm there.
Okay.
Cuz it's not there yet.
It's not there yet, alright, so, so this needs to be the indent to the matrix. Are we ready for a motion? Are we ready for a motion?
Can I suggest that, suggest we do the, we do two separate motions, we do this document first, and then, then, separate motion, this document, and then just read back the changes on this document? Because I think there were two, right? Two adds?
I have two adds.
Because there were no other changes to this one, right, just two additions?
Right.
Alright, or do you, or do you want to join this document, do this first? Do you, you want to do them separate?
I think it's easy from a paperwork exercise.
Okay, alright.
But we need Tom's language for-
So the ones for the Buckman property, is that correct? Looking for language in that regard?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that should probably be on the, on this one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably should be added to the last part. Not sure where the chapter is that goes.
Probably a book code land use.
Chapter four, I believe, Tom.
Yeah.
Four is land use.
Yeah, I think so.
Sure we have a specific page reference.
Because that way the motion will be to accept this, with the following addendum, and it just makes it cleaner. And then we can get to this, which has got a few more changes.
Okay. Now, do we also need to specify that we're, we want to be sure there's a change page that goes along with it? And that the two surveys are also-
No, that, that, I think that's just, that's just like, yeah.
That's administrative, that staff will take care of, okay.
Um, so then the additional change related to the Buckman property would be to chapter four on land use. I do not have a page, a number necessarily.
You might want to add it to like, page seventy, seventy-one, where it actually describes each of the, the properties, the parcel, the address, what exists, and what they want it to be.
Okay, so it'd be page seventy-one, I would gather.
Yeah, I don't know how they have, they have down broken down by-
Because that would be consistent with the others, same, that'd be parallel, okay?
Okay, that the, uh, the proposed change would be that the Buckman property, uh, would be, uh, rezoned, either, it's currently residential, right?
It could remain, yes, it could remain.
Would either remain residential or, uh, be called out for rezoning to commercial or industrial, conditioned upon, uh, the current owner's preference.
Which commercial?
Or industrial.
Are we calling, which commercial category are you saying?
I, I don't know, I mean, I, I did, I'm not sure what, what was the consensus here to ask him about.
Because I mean, there is a significant, there is differences between L.C. and C.C.
I think it was C.C., the way that it was, we were gonna allow whatever, the carnival grounds, right?
I guess it would be, maybe it would be conditioned on whatever the carnival grounds is.
Right.
Because there was, but, well, we don't have the mixed use yet.
Yeah, I mean, community commercial is fine, but I mean, I just want to be, just to clarify.
I think-
Because if we said, sorry, if we said commercial, then it's still-
Well, right, I think the intent was consistent, you got industrial on one side, you now have a commercial on the other.
So it should be community grounds.
As community commercial.
And Tom, you might want to either put that on page seventy-four, which is in addition to the Twin Ridge Business Park, which it goes up against, or page seventy-seven, which talks about the carnival grounds.
Okay, and I'll leave that to staff.
Kind of goes to either side, yeah.
We'll leave that to staff, where to include that.
Yeah, good call.
Okay, so that's one change, Chris, what was the other change that?
Um-
The other ones were, that I had, were that the documents-
The property on the corner? Oh, no, it's in here.
Oh, right.
The property in the corner, wasn't that?
Um, I think that that only needed to change in the map. I don't think there's text that requires a change or addition, um, but we'll, we'll leave that to staff too. I'll suggest that to-
Sorry, what was that suggestion?
What's that?
What was that suggestion you just, yeah?
I'm about to, uh, figure that out here.
Sorry, we're right over the first step.
That's alright. My, uh, suggestion would be that, um, that staff determine whether text changes are required for an assignment of land use designation of OPE to parcel fourteen eighty-seven dash one, which is a part of the Harrison Farm.
Do you want me to read back on?
I think those are the only two substantive changes in here.
Okay. Then is there a motion for planning to accept this document with those two additions?
Alright, so I'll go ahead and move that planning condition. We, we're accepting changes.
Right.
Alright, so I'll move that planning commission accept the changes outlined in the Town of Mount Airy two thousand thirteen comprehensive master plan, town council revision document of October sixth, two thousand and fourteen, with the following two revisions. I think you can read back the revisions for the motion. The ones that you guys wrote down.
Yeah, that the Buckman property would be rezoned to either remain residential or be called out for rezoning commercial or industrial, community commercial or industrial.
Correct.
Based on the opinion of the property owner. And then the other one was-
Let's, let's do preference.
Yeah, preference.
The preference, okay.
Based upon the property owner's preference.
And then the second one, who said?
I think it was to determine the land designation to parcel-
That the staff determine whether textual changes to the master plan, threat master plan be required to reflect the assignment of land use designation of OPE to parcel fourteen eighty-seven dash one, which is a part of the Harrison Farm.
Oh, we're on tape, right?
Yes.
So you've got it, yeah.
Okay.
But again, that's, that's a staff determination.
So, alright, so that's the motion.
Alright, so the motion is to revise, uh, the base document with those two additions. Is there a second to that motion?
There's a second.
Okay, motion made by, by Chris and seconded by Judy, all those in favor, let, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, like sign? Okay, so that's the first piece.
Pressure on the vote, go ahead.
No, y'all, y'all did all, y'all did all the hard work, and then, and then don't think, don't think once you're done with this, now you got to sign an ordinance, you got an OPE, you got an MXT. The penny's great too, isn't it?
Oh, yeah. And then the second piece is that we need to make a motion to accept the proposed map changes.
Okay, can we get down which ones we have, and just for the record?
Uh, okay, so we're talking, we're essentially going through all these, right?
We're just outlining which on, which ones we're amending, because I think there were some amend, amendments, like, uh, change number five, we amended.
Well, I think it, it, it started with five. We basically, let's see, we basically were saying, we were asking for staff to handle because they would, they would be in best position.
Five and six for staff to handle.
Yeah, five and six. Seven. Seven. Nine, ten.
I think there is.
Eleven.
Not nine.
Wasn't nine?
No.
Yeah, nine.
No, it was ten, it was ten and eleven.
Ten and eleven.
Ten and eleven, okay. Keep me honest. Ten and eleven.
And then thirteen.
And twelve. And thirteen. Okay, and fourteen? Um.
Fourteen, I think you just accepted.
Yeah, fourteen's just accepted, there wasn't really nothing for staff to do.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. And let's see. What about? Well, fifteen, we just did. Fifteen, we just did. So fourteen, they would correctly identify, and then sixteen. They're basically gonna change the coloration on that. Okay?
Right.
Okay, so we got, we got those identified? Alright, so the motion's going to be to accept these additional, additional map changes with the specified, um, well, with that specificity, the particular ones that we're asking for staff to handle, because they'll be in best position to do so.
Right, so I can make an official motion to change this.
Because you have, then you have to reference the other ones.
Right.
Yep.
Alright, so, I'll move the planning commission accept the, the, the document entitled Town of Mount Airy two thousand thirteen comprehensive master plan, proposed map changes dated October sixth, two thousand and fourteen, with the following amendments. Section, change number five. Staff to resolve. The, I mean, that's fine for a co, from a legal perspective, Tom.
Yeah.
Staff to resolve?
Other, staff's gonna make a review to adjust anything clerically to make it consistent with changes.
So, alright, so number five, staff to result, staff to review and resolve?
Yep.
Under section six, remarks, staff to review and resolve. Under section seven. No, you had no change around.
Yeah, we've already done that.
Under section, ten was your next one, right?
Ten.
Ten.
Ten, staff to review and resolve. There's no, nothing need to be done on that. Under section thirteen, staff to review and resolve. That was it? So those were the sections we were asking staff to review, review and resolve, and the rest of it, we were leaving alone.
Otherwise, we were accepting.
Right, because it said change needed, so we didn't, okay.
Right, accepting other changes.
Okay, is there a, a second to that motion? Okay. Leslie, seconds, all those in favor of these, of these changes, uh, plus amendments, by, by saying aye? Aye, all opposed, like sign? Okay, and it passes. Okay.
Shouldn't you break out the champagne? Should have. Please, Bob and I should-
Every once in a while.
We should have.
Because, because Chris, you gotta pay the big bucks.
Yes.
There is, uh, one, um, monkey wrench though into the rezoning ordinance, does this body not meet in December typically?
Uh, we didn't last year.
Because the zoning ordinance will technically be introduced, will be introduced in November, and it needs to go, because there's a chapter one twelve change, needs to be referred to this body.
Yeah, I thought January was an interesting time to-
Yeah, and it just occurred to me that if you all don't meet in December,
Well, we could, I think we could have reached a meeting earlier.
It may not be appropriate.
We need to do that, obviously, we need to accommodate that. Okay, um, anything else, Tom, that you wanted to share with us, or need to, so we can let you go?
No, I, I would like to stay with, for the OPE part, at least, um, because that does have some bearing discussion with IDA Harrison.
Okay, alright. So we'll move on then to unfinished business. Um, and this was simply an opportunity for any subcommittee updates. If there's been any opportunity to advance the ball from our last update on, on the subcommittee work.
This is called the master plan, that kind of got in the way.
Yep.
Yeah, everything else is.
Anything new to report from the OPE group? Anybody's aware of?
No, Jennifer Smith had a bunch of really good points at the last, whenever we last talked about this, and it's kind of fallen that void of the master plan, so I'll have to ask Heidi Mitchell's back. Remember Jennifer had a couple of different questions about, about it?
Correct, she did, and then she, yeah, she's been, uh, under the gun too, she's been out some.
I don't have any updates.
Okay.
I, I do know that IDA's counsel has looked at it and made some comments, so I'm sure Heather will be sharing those with you all.
Beyond the comments that we looked at the last subcommittee meeting?
Yeah, I'm not sure how long ago they were made.
Right, was that right after, because Frank Dartsfall had presented them, and they were, they weren't, they were favorable, as I remember, the tone of them.
Well, th, this would be comments from counsel for the IDA, and he did have some-
Oh, okay, some more to look at, huh?
I would say not as positive.
See, I don't know, think about that then.
And, and I have taken a look at it too, so I'll just give my comments to Heather. We, again, I was sort of put on hold due to this, the master plan, so I'll get back to that as well.
Okay.
Okay, any, um, status or update on MXT?
Well, let's see, we met, um, I believe it was early, well, in September, Rob Scranton was, uh, joined us for a discussion, which was, um, which was good, and we have assignments, but Heather is away, and then we will probably be meeting by, Tom. Early November, I'll send out the email. So, no, nothing concrete, but good ideas.
Okay.
Going around, yeah.
And your group is still feeling like the, um, the, the mixed use ordinance, uh, that, uh, that Westminster came up with, has some application?
Well, we're not quite sure about that. We're, we're exploring some other possibilities.
Alright, alright, good. Uh, then the only other thing would be any update on the, um, Highway twenty-seven corridor study? Any comments from you, since Heather's still out?
Don't have anything there.
Okay, more than likely when she gets back. Although, I will say that what, what you guys gave us was, was pretty well formed.
Yep.
Yeah, really was, it really hung together nicely. Okay, then, any new business? Come before us tonight, anybody have anything? Okay. Then, in two weeks, counsel will be teed up to, starting at seven, for a public hearing on, uh, master plan, and then their regular, um, November meeting, beginning at seven thirty. Okay? And we had the possibility of the need to move our November meeting up to November thirteen, okay? So, do folks know, will that date work for you, if we still need to do that?
We probably said yes.
Yeah, it's in my calendar already, yeah, so.
Alright, alright. And that's the assumption at this point. I, I expect that that will probably continue to, to need to be the case.
November thirteenth, though.
Thursday.
Thursday, yep.
That will be.
I think we'd, I think she checked that date out with us.
Yeah, at the list, yeah.
Which she left.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, okay, yeah, when she did all those email.
Yeah.
Yeah, she sent out a bunch of emails, yeah.
Okay.
Will that be a regular meeting?
Yes.
Sorry, that's signed.
Yep, we have a few, um, site plan reviews that night scheduled already, so we can work your signing when we see it.
Yeah, okay.
We haven't seen it yet.
Okay. Alright, and then it sounds like, uh, as soon as Heather gets back, we're probably going to need to look at, early dates in December, if indeed we need to, um, to act on what Tom was talking about. Okay, anybody have anything else?
Yes.
Alright.
Um, you know, again, um, in a sense, I think the master plan process is now done from the planning perspective, right? With planning commission- From a planning commission perspective, and you know, again, um, you know, speaking for the council, you know, heartfelt thanks, the amount of time, the amount of effort, the thought, everything that everyone here put in for this. It's important for the community to know that everybody sitting here, except for myself, are volunteers, um, and one of the things that, that, you know, we pride ourselves as a community, um, I mean, y'all represent the best of the community, volunteering all of your time and effort to help us out, and, you know, sort of set the future direction for the town, so, um, again, thank you very much.
This, the effort was, was made to try to include as many of the commissions as possible in this, and to make, uh, the data gathering and the input and the recommendations as broad-based as possible, and I think, I think that was a successful effort. I think it's a better plan as a result, so, um, as soon as this thing gets finalized, there's going to be, uh, a lot of gratitude that's also expressed to those other commissions. Okay?
And just for those who weren't at the, um, the volunteer thing, just to note, um, I was pleasantly surprised that the planning commission got nominated, and I don't know by who, as one of the Volunteer of the Year award.
The whole commission.
The whole commission got nominated, which was pretty, pretty cool, so, yeah, that was pretty neat to see and everything, and got recognized, so, um, we didn't win, just so you didn't know. But we got nominated, which was pretty cool.
Hopefully that means we won't be singled out, or stoned, or.
Oh, yeah, we will.
Oh, there it is, thank you, thank you for bringing that. I was so concerned about getting to my next meeting that I went off and left it, alright.
I have a question for staff, for the, uh, public hearing, for, um, what is it, what's the notice mechanism, just on the website, I mean, there's no more.
Website and newspaper.
Newspaper, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
That's like a good idea, alright.
Already knocked that.
Thanks, folks, for your patience.